Well, let's get started. Good morning and welcome to our monthly work session, August 21st, 2018, 8:30. We have a relatively packed agenda, so I'm going to get started. I know that Mrs. Goodwin is on her way and Mrs. Brown is here, but will be joining us shortly. So with that, we'll start with item number one, which is review of School Avenue Community Workshops to the table Jeff Maltzberry. And I say Maltzberry, I put an R in there, I apologize, Maltzby. And Kathy Eball, welcome.
Good morning, you're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning and thank you. No worries about the pronunciation of my last name. It took me until the eighth grade to get it right, so it's okay. For the record, I am Jeff Maltzby, your Assistant Superintendent Chief Operating Officer, and I'm joined this morning by my colleague Ms. Kathy Eball, who will provide you an update and summary of the recently completed community workshops as they related to School Avenue. This is Eball.
Good morning. And by the way, we're more informal on these.
We're first names here.
Yeah, these workshops, it took me a little while to get used to that part, but you do.
I'm still transitioning, so.
No problem.
We'll all help you.
You can come out like those.
At least at the workshops. Good morning. I am happy to let you know that at least the first phase of the community workshops with School Avenue have been completed. At your May joint workshop with the City Commission, you asked staff to initiate a series of meetings with the community to see if there was a way that we could find some compromise and consensus about how to move forward in a way that allowed us to proceed with a vacation application for the School Avenue and gave the community some resources in exchange, specifically on the bike ped section. So we had our first workshop in May, and then we had two subsequent workshops in June. And the presentation, the final presentation that was presented by our consultants was included in the packet. And I'm just going to quickly summarize with the, go to the solution is, there's two ideas that are presented here. Those were the two ideas that kind of came out of the community. But at the final workshop, which is where the community kind of decided which one they wanted, there was very clear consensus. In fact, we had a little, we gave everybody money and said, "You can spend your money however you want on these two solutions. You tell us which one you want." And there wasn't a dollar in the east side solution. It was all on the west side solution. So it was very clear from those who had participated. And I will let you know that the very first workshop in May was very well attended and each meeting got less well attended. But the solution that was most preferred by the community was the west side part walkway that would connect Bay Street up to Browning Street along the west side of our campus, taking you along the west side of the parking lot that we share with Sarasota Circus and then along our west side of the campus and then through the back alleyway that is shared between us and Ringling College. Although in the lease agreement for Ringling College, we maintained the priority of the alleyway. So their lease really starts at the building, not at the alley. So we are, as I said, we are done with the first phase, and that's because this is where we've gotten to an agreement of what it is the community would like us to pursue. We promised them that we would continue to involve them as we go through design, which we haven't yet initiated. We had a meeting, staff has had a meeting with the Ringling College to get their input and their sign off on that this is something that they would be willing to do. And we have talked to our architect about starting the process of doing some design, but we're going to wait to really start design until we hear for the vacation application. So that way, I can give you a quick summary on the vacation application or I can take questions.
I have a quick question as it pertains to the walkway. And I know, I talked to Mr. Hardy also about this, so as it pertains to the liability and how do we, I just am very concerned with that. So I understand that this was kind of a compromise that we would be willing, from a beautification standpoint, to incur some costs. And that's up to debate as to what that appropriate cost is and what. But as it pertains to an open walkway, we would be responsible, that would be our liability? Am I understanding that correctly?
So we are, we are working through a number of issues right now. And a lot of those are design questions and how we could do it. But we have as staff talked about those issues. In fact, we had an impromptu meeting yesterday about this issue because we suspected that rightfully you should ask that question.
Right.
So there's a number of things we can do. We can put in cameras that would be direct linked to our command center. We can increase lighting, which is always a good way to deter things we don't want to happen. We can look at some design functions. We talked about the, the city has asked us to look at creating hours so that the walkway would be gated. I think that that was not an option that Dr. Bowden was very excited about.
No for gating?
Well, my concern with, is if you built a walkway on the western edge and you said the hours of the walkway and you shut the gate, then the expectation would be, are you going to then open up School Ave during those hours? And so if we're looking for the permanent vacation, then I think the walkway needs to be a permanent solution. If one is meant to offset the other, then you'd be back to saying, "We're going to close that gate at 10 o'clock and open this other one." And I don't think that's where we want to land.
So, and then there were also, we talked about call boxes that you could, you could install, call boxes along the edge. Jeff, is there anything else that we've talked about? So we.
We also talked about giving it to the city.
Yes, that's right. We also talked.
Who's in the sidewalk business?
Yes. We also talked about.
That's a good option.
We talked, we talked about that we would, we would build it and then talk to the city about them taking over, we do dedicated easement to the city.
Right.
We haven't approached the city of whether or not they'd be interested in taking it, but you know, there's, there's a lot of questions that we still need to, that we're still working through. And honestly, the city wants us to answer as many of these questions as we can as part of the development review process before we go to planning commission.
Shirley, I know. And then Jane.
You know, I went out there when, you know, this was first starting and met with some of the neighbors and Mr. Jones. And, you know, we looked at it and it looked kind of obvious, you know? If you're looking to get a walkway, we could improve this. And the people that were there that day were like, "Yeah, that would work." But I think it would also work because it would tie the parking lot, the old Sarasota High parking lot, over to where the circus is, over to the front. And also, we could open up the gate during football games. And it would also have a walkway for the Museum of Art so that they could walk if they parked over there and come around. I think there's a lot of flexibility that it will give us and the Museum of Art and the circus, you know, for those overflow times that they have. Because at one point, we were looking at, the circus was looking at being able to share that parking lot, and they were going, "Well, then we have to build something over that, what is that called, a creek there?"
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a, I know, I think, well, it's a waterway.
It's some sort of a waterway.
I think it's a.
And then I seem to have walked over this, this area that they couldn't find a way to overcome, to join the parking lots. And I'm like, "Wait a minute, didn't we just go from this side to that side?" And so it was surprising to see that there already was a walkway. So I think not only will this help those people in the neighborhood that want to get their back and forth, but I think it will help the high school, the Museum of Art, and the circus to be able to more fully utilize the spaces in between. So I think this is a good idea and that you want to make it look as pretty as possible. I mean, by adding some of these other things, we'll make it look better than just this, you know, empty hall and with the lighting. I think it'll be good. And, you know, I think they'll enjoy the walk. Plus, it'll make the museum and the circus more available to the people who are walking and also those who want to come to the school. They'll be able to come around and come into the front. So I think it's a good idea and I'm glad you've worked it out with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Well, that meeting we had Shirley was, I think, almost a year and a half ago now. It was summer, the beginning of summer last year.
Oh, how time flies.
And this was where some of the citizens brought this idea to us, and we weren't sure that we liked it. But the more you and David and I, we walked what could be that route, and I think the more we talked about it, the more we like it. David, who I will say wanted to be here for this discussion today, but being the second week of school, he had too many other commitments. But he did want me to tell you that he already has named this. He calls it the Avenue of the Arts. And it's the exact idea that you connect the three art-type facilities together. He sees, he sees a lot of great opportunities in this, so he wanted me to share you, share that with you. He would have done it himself in probably a lot more passionate David way. But yes, he really likes this.
And David being David Jones, the principal of Sarasota High?
Yes, David, no, David being David Jones, the principal of Sarasota High School.
Jane, you know.
Yeah.
I know who they are, thank you very much. I remember watching that show on TV.
You've got to be kidding me. You don't know who the monkeys are?
Oh, David Jones of the Monkees.
Is that Davy Jones? No.
Davy Jones.
The music group.
Okay, so Mrs. Goodwin, Jane.
Okay.
Jane.
And looking over some of these different amenities, I was, I thought, gee, it's everything here except a performing arts center. And I mention that because of course, David Jones has designs on a performing arts center. My concern is security and who's liable and the liability issues. And I do believe it should be open, in my opinion, all the time, because why would we want to close it down if we're trying to look at a solution to closing down permanently School Avenue? But I, I'm concerned with some of the costs that we would incur because some of these things are quite costly and the maintenance and who's going to, who's going to take care of this. As we have now with the Venice Performing Arts Center, we have a continuous concern. The flags were put back up this summer. We should have taken them down, so they are pretty tattered after just buying and replacing them in the spring. Learned a lesson there. But, you know, who's going to be replacing things as they need replacing? And who will be in charge of the maintenance in an area like this, which could be, could be costly, but also could deteriorate looks very quickly if some things were done. And then the overall security component, are we?
We are. So the maintenance issue is, I think the city would expect that we would take responsibility for the long-term maintenance, although a lot of, so what you see here as some of the amenities that the consultant shared with the, may or may not happen. I think we are looking for, you know, improved lighting. I don't think you're looking at benches. I think you're looking at mostly a walkway, a simple.
Shade structures and all of that.
Yeah.
But I think we have other partners, and as Shirley mentioned, we have, we have the circus, we have Ringling College, and we have the city. So I think we need to look at those partners participating a bit, you know, if there are some of those encumbrances that we face.
Agreed. Carolina, then Eric.
No, no, I was just talking about you.
Oh, thank you. Till then, Caroline.
When we come into the parking lot, through there, in front of the steps.
So when you come, so the way that this.
You come around, you come around, and when you're driving, you come around there.
Right.
What does the security door look like? Oh, we, we'll have a gate at the end of that? And then if we have a gate at the end of that, it is strong lock.
Caroline, I think, let me clarify, I think what you're doing is you're asking questions that we are still working through, those types of scenarios and saying, "Okay, how does all this work exactly where you're talking about at that parking lot where students are parking and then we have potentially people walking through that walkway?" Those are the things we, you know, these are concept designs, and so we're not to those details yet. So those are the types of things we're trying to flush out right now, is how does all that work? And I think we can come back to you with that. We don't have those answers right now because we're not that far in the design, but we know we have a lot of questions, liability, safety, you know, maintenance, all of that stuff we've got to take into consideration. But we are just not there yet with figuring all that out.
So what are you asking, just conceptually?
What we're asking for today is, so the city has a concern, and I think probably a rightful concern, that if we move through vacation and they give us vacation contingent on this, that how do they, you know, unlike a developer, they can put contingencies on a developer for a future step. Once they vacate the roadway, the roadway is vacated. So this is sort of, this is our promise, our way of saying to the city, we've put it in our capital plan. We are committing to moving forward with this. As I said, they have asked us to flush out as many of the details regarding safety and security as we can at this, at this point. And I think there's, you know, lighting, we can certainly flush out, whether we use cameras, we can flush out whether we, whether we decide to do ours or not. We can, we can make those determinations in the next month or so when we, as we need to through the development review process. But there's other items that are going to have to wait until the design. And we have told the city that while we're giving them a conceptual design, as our architect is taking some of this information and putting into a conceptual design, we're not going to do a full design until we get the road vacated because we're not going to spend the money for a design if we don't get the roadway vacated. So we're trying to find that right balance between giving the city enough comfort that this is going, that we're committing ourselves to doing this, and enough leeway for us to work through the design process that will start once the road is vacated, if it's vacated.
Shirley.
I see that you're looking at seating and benches in the area. You know, I think if you're looking at liability, by encouraging the people to stay there and hang out, I mean, because it's what, like, two blocks?
The seating and the benches was as part of the solution for the east side.
Okay.
And it was, that was, that was not a part of the solution for the west side. It was part of, so the east side solution had those shade structures and the seating and those items. That's not where the community went.
Okay, yeah, because I was thinking if you're worried about something happening in that area, why have people stay there longer? So we're not going to be putting seating in.
No, that's not, not our goal for this, not our goal. This is looking to be more of just a bike ped, a bike pedestrian trail walkthrough, not, not something that has benches and shade structures. That was part of the east side solution.
So I agree. I think there's a couple of thoughts. First of all, I know this has been a long time coming, so I don't want it to be lost. Thank you for working through this. And I know it's, I think Jane brought up a really good point of utilizing the experience that we had at VPAC and how we worked, the pros, the cons, et cetera, because I think this is a very much similar collaboration. I do worry about the unforeseen costs, but I also know I get the census is also a deal breaker, so we have to look at the sense of security and for this, for Sarasota High, but also how do we make this work in a reasonable financial component and really flush out all the options? My question is, because I think that in the long term and a bigger picture, there's a lot of benefits to it. I think Shirley brought that up. I think there really is long-term benefits. I just, I worry that we're not, I think, as you said, in the sidewalk business, it's not something we really take on ownership of. So to be very clear of what that is, what the unforeseen costs are, because we want to focus on education and partner, and I don't know if art can help us from a legal standpoint where we can, it gets a little dicey, especially in the event of a claim that when it's shared, we really do want it to be very clear on who owns it. But that's, to me, still something that gives me great concern on how we move forward.
Well, we have, we are scheduling a staff meeting with the important Lynn Peterson from Risk Management, ourselves are, to talk about the safety, security issues. As I said, the city is part of, so this gives me an opportunity to quickly update you as to where we are with the vacation application. We submitted our application at the end of July. We had our Development Review Committee meeting last week with the city, with city staff. We got comments like you always do at a DRC meeting. One of the, one of the staff comments dealt with the safety and security issues regarding the pathway. So before we can resubmit, we're going to have to flush out some of those items. Our goal is to get to Planning Commission either in, at their October meeting or their November meeting, which then puts us into City Commission meeting either November, it's a two, it's a two-hearing vote from the commission, so either November, December, or January, February. So the latest we're looking at is hopefully February for a final decision. It just depends on, some of the other DRC comments, Jody, I think we can, we are, we're working through pretty quickly. It's these issues regarding the safety, security of the pathway that are probably going to take us the most time to work through. And the sooner we can get them worked through, the sooner we can get our application back to the city and finish. But, you know, ideally, we'd love to be done this calendar year. I just, my gut says we're going to be, we're going to be into February.
Okay. Caroline, did you have a question? Oh, sorry.
I like calling it something of the arts. I'm not sure avenue of the arts, because avenue kind of implies that it's a place for cars to drive. And I surely wouldn't want someone to think they can drive their car down there. So tell David to put his thinking hat back on.
Okay.
And come up, I mean, I like blank of the arts.
Right.
Or the arts blank. But avenue of the arts, I think if it's on a map or anything, it just kind of gives the implication that you can drive on it. And that's a little picky, but.
There's an arts in Bradenton.
Arts, arts walk.
That's, there's one, there's one that's titled that in Bradenton.
Darn it. We already have an avenue of the arts in Sarasota, but I think that's a little, that's maybe a couple steps down the road.
Yeah, so.
Figure this part out first.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll think about that later. So there are some, the other reason we're bringing this to you today is, as I said, this is our way of committing ourselves to this project for the city, which means that's why we, usually you have adopted the CIP by now, but if you wanted to know why it was being held, it was for this. We wanted to get this into the CIP. It hasn't, there is no placeholder, there hasn't been a placeholder for the, for it on the CIP up till now. We have added a $3 million wedge. And that $3 million isn't just this walkway. It's, the city has also had some other, remember, we did a transportation study for the city, and there were a number of recommendations that came out of that. It also deals with all of those. So it's this walkway plus taking care of all of the transportation improvements that came out of the traffic study. So there's a $3 million wedge that we were able to put in year one for this project so that we can commit to the city that we will do what we need to do in order to get the vacation done. What we will need to hear from you today is you're okay with that before we bring you the final CIP tonight.
Caroline.
I am, because I know what the bottom line is in our capital budget, and we have the money to do that.
Shirley.
It looks like we got 20 minutes ahead, and then we, she brought up the capital improvement plan. Can I bring up an issue on the capital improvement plan that I was looking into?
Can we close this conversation and then go there? Yes.
Yeah, I think it'd be better brought up here than at the meeting tonight, but maybe we could do it both ways.
But as it pertains, yeah, I mean, I've already had a schedule, but, and I think a couple of other items in here kind of blend within the CIP anyway. But I, I don't want to hold this project forward. I think, do you feel confident in the $3 million price tag?
Yes, we did.
That's my biggest concern.
We had that $3 million, our architect who did these drawings for us, we asked him to look at the improvements being asked for by the city from the traffic study, as well as the, what it would cost to do this west side walkway. And that's the figure that they, they actually gave us a slightly less figure, and we padded it by, I think, a quarter million.
So we figure the walkway itself, the east-west walkway is about a million dollars, and then we're figuring in terms of the sidewalk and some of the intersection improvements we're going to have to undertake is probably about a million, million and a half. So we feel we're good. Under contract quicker is better because of escalating prices, but I think we're in good shape.
Does that include resetting Sarasota High School, pulling up the portion of School Ave, sodding sidewalks, all of that?
No.
It does not. It does not. And we've got, that's part of, one of the things we need to talk through is what does that look like with utilities? Because they got to have access through there. And so that's one of the issues we're working through with language, with Utilities Department.
Eric.
Since we have that, since we're being told that the security is under budget by $2 million, and I don't have a problem supporting this since we can use that security money to do the School Avenue issue, so.
Richard, we have been wanting to do this for so long, and this is a great opportunity. It might not come along again, so we have to make sure that the money is in the budget to do this because it's imperative that we close School Avenue. So that, if you put that priority there, and we talk about safety and security, this is a safety issue.
Right.
So it doesn't matter. I mean, of course, I wouldn't want to spend.
Uncapped.
Right.
Well, and I, yeah, I would close with, I agree with you. I think that this has been a long time coming, and I would hate for it to stall on this. I think why I ask, are you confident with that price tag and what that includes? Because as we talk about how elaborate or how detailed, it could be multi-phase, and I hope that as we go through this and you work with staff at Sarasota, City of Sarasota, that they understand that, I mean, in the long-term picture, I think we still need to work out some of those elements, but that wouldn't necessarily, I mean, I don't think all of those security implications are in our CIP as it pertains to this add-on. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that is true. We'll have to work with Mike Andreas certainly in Safety and Security Department and see what, he hasn't had a good look at this yet and get his interpretation of what we need to do here. So yes, those things still need to be flushed out, and there needs to be additional operating costs to make sure all that stuff operates.
Correct. Direct hard costs on the actual construction of the walkway. So I agree. I mean, if this is, I think that, and kind of the good faith aspect of, hopefully they can recognize it's not uncapped amount of budget that we can put forward this, but we recognize that this is somewhat of a compromise, I'd be okay with that. So, because I want to see this closed.
So we all do.
That's a big.
We're working, we're working through that.
Any other comments on that particular item? And then Shirley, did you want to go to the?
Yes, if you turn to page 32 of your capital improvement plan workbook that you have, we have an overview of the, of the plan. And I basically have two questions. And when we're looking at this, we have to look at the bottom line to the reserves. So regardless of how these things are lined up in here, we're still going to end up at 13 million in reserves in 2022, 2023.
So can I make a comment about the reserves? Because I think this is something we always get lost in.
Go ahead.
These reserve lines, they're a total of probably six, six or seven different fund, funds. And different, each fund can be spent in different ways. So this. So this is an aggregate. I can tell you that staff has, I, that was one of the things that I have learned through working with the capital plan in the last four years, is don't always look at that aggregate number, because it's deceiving. It can be really high in one fund that's designated for something and really low in another one. So it's not as, yeah, it's not as fluid, and it, and it can't, it doesn't necessarily say that we can spend it all in the same place. It can't be just one.
Restricted.
So it's restricted. There are, there is restrictions in that fund balance.
Well, then, then you'll probably be good that I'm asking these questions now, so you'll have the answer this evening, this afternoon, when I bring them to you.
Okay.
I know that we moved a lot of things to the right, or to later. And, and two of those things I want to look at, and that's that Pine View wing that, I think that includes the science. I mean, we've been pushing that to the right for some time. I mean, is there any way that we can push that back in and get that done for next year? Start it next year or the year after?
The science wing was, is funded now. So it does not include, that's just the classroom wing. And at an earlier meeting with Todd this year, he asked, we, we, I think the question from Todd was, are you telling me we're going to be leaving portables behind when we build this building? And we said yes, and he said no. So we are, so that project now has been changed a little bit based on the direction from Dr. Bowden, so that we make sure that all of the portables that are on the campus get released. And this project actually stayed right, right in line. It would have, it would have moved right to where it is now, because we're still, we still have a year's worth of planning. We haven't gotten permission from the state for that project yet, so it's right where it belongs.
And, and the other issue is the Venice High classroom wing. I mean, I understand, as you probably do too, I mean, there, there are science teachers that don't have a classroom, I understand. And, and there's a waiting list of over 300 at that school. That's what I heard. I mean, I don't know, of those who want to join. So is there any way we can move that up? Move that to the left?
As soon as this meeting, this workshop is finished, Jody and I have a meeting with Sheena Rinyan, who is the, who is our budget finance person, to look at moving Venice High closer in the budget. So we'll, we would be able to bring that back to you this afternoon. There's some things that you need to understand about Venice. One is, there isn't a waiting list of 300 people for that campus.
Can you say that loud, because there is or is not?
Is not.
Okay.
No, but those 300 people, those 300 people there, they're over capacity.
They are, they are over.
They're there.
Yes. They're, they are, they are over capacity. They don't have a waiting list. They are over capacity. But we do not have state permission yet for that building. And if, as we've talked about in previous meetings, the state doesn't want us to build, doesn't allow us to build unless we have access capacity. We need to, when, when, as far as the state is concerned, when we open a 400 student station wing, there needs to be 400 students waiting to go into that wing.
That can't go somewhere else.
That can't go, that can't go somewhere else. So Mickey Ryan, who, as you know, is our district's guru when it comes to working with the state and getting state permissions. She has, she's reaching out to the state to start that process of getting permission. But now that we're at 300 over, that's when we can really, it's, I know it doesn't make sense. I know it's frustrating. It's frustrating for myself as a planner, because if you want to build a roadway, build a roadway. You want to build a, a fire station, build a fire station. You want to build a park, build a park. You want to build a school, get permission from Tallahassee. So.
Unless it's a charter school.
So we are, we are in the process of starting that process with the state to get the permission we need. We have to look at, as you know, we have to do a whole lot of things. We have to look at our adjacencies. We have to have portables on the campus that show a demonstrated need. We have to look at their COFTI numbers, and remember, COFTI is a year behind us. So, so I understand the frustration at Venice High, and we are working through those. We're going to be adding three portables to the campus in the next couple, in the next couple of months to address their issues right now. And we are starting the process with the state, and hopefully this afternoon, we'll bring you a budget that at least moves it closer, recognizing we still have some planning to do with the state.
All right, let me clarify a couple of comments that were made there, because there are conversations I've had individually that when you add a portable to a school's campus, you increase the capacity of that campus if we own the portable. And so I've had some conversation about, can we get some portables at Venice High? The portables we're going to put at Venice High School are leased portables, and they don't count. If we put one of our portables at Venice High, they would count. It's the law, we just figure out how to make it work. So one of the issues is sometimes when you add portables to a campus, the state says, good for you. Then you fix your problem, you put a portable there, you're done. And so the portables that are going to Venice High School will be leased portables, which will still allow us to do the classroom wing. The other thing is, what is commonly referred to as the Linda Chapman memo that went out last year that said, any building construction project must be approved by Tallahassee, was backed off of at a later date. And what it said is, if you have local options, which is impact fees, then it doesn't require the state approval process. And so if there were an issue where the state said, you can't build a classroom wing at Venice High, you could always say, thank you very much, we'll do it with impact fee dollars, which you don't regulate. So I just want to put those two points out there.
And that's, that's something we're going to be looking at in, at our meeting that's following with Sheena, is exactly how much impact fee money we have and how quickly we'll have enough to pay for Venice High School so we can get around the city, the state.
Jane.
Well, I just, you know, I was going to ask a question about the portables, because I was concerned that that would, you know, cut our nose off despite our face. But I know that Venice is over. I know there are people that want to get in. And I will reiterate this today, if there are people living in that inset area that are supposed to go to Charlotte County that do not want to go, guess what? I'm all in favor of their going to Venice High School, because they are paying Sarasota County taxes, and that is something that, that I find to be not, not the way we should be doing business. So I will continue to try to get those folks into Venice High, as I did in April with several, several students that were slated to go to Charlotte County, who had been at Venice Middle. But it shouldn't have been such an effort. And that's the other thing that I would mention, and this has nothing to do with you, is that we need to make sure that our choice committee, that this makes once a month for an hour or something, that, that doesn't work really well with me. I, I just find that to be not good customer service. And, you know, your school wasn't mentioned, we didn't have time for you this month, to a parent. We'll, we'll get you next month, maybe. Mm-mm, doesn't work.
I think you raise a point. They have an overwhelming amount of work coming through in the, that wasn't, the structure wasn't, the continuation of the structure that was in place, but an overburdening amount of work. So I think that may be a good workshop. But on the CIP, you had another question?
I, I agree with Ms. Goodwin, as always. But I mean, I was shocked to see people in the hallways. There were desks in the hallways and people having classrooms. And, and, you know, I was talking to Dr. Bowden, like my wife now, it's no such thing that you can't buy a couch anymore, it's only sectionals, and there's no more curtains, there's only window dressing. Well, guess what? There's no longer hallways, they're community spaces. So they always come up with these, these cutesy words. But, but there was desks in the hallways and people having classes there. And the concern is, is that once we build this and get to 400, since we're 300, they're going to, with all the buildings in South County, it's going to be overcrowded. By the time you, by the day you cut the ribbon on that new classroom ring, we're probably going to have, we're going to be 400 over capacity again. We're right back where, where we started. So that's something we need to, need to look at. And the other issue is, I think one of the ways we can, we can alleviate the, the space in, at Venice High, is do what we did at Venice Middle to, for Northport High. I hear a lot of people from Northport High wanting to come to Venice High, and there's space at, at Northport. I think we need to look at doing what we did at Venice Middle, adopting that type of plan at Northport High, trying to attract people to, to want to go there, instead of having those people, you know, because the person, he was talking about at Venice Middle, that person lived in Northport.
Correct.
But, but I, I just, those are the two things, those people live, they lived in Northport. I mean, so those, those are some of the concerns, is I think we need to do what we did in Venice and Northport. And we got to be cognizant of the day we cut the ribbon on that building, that classroom ring, we're going to be overcrowded again. So this is truly, seems like a lot of money, but it's really just a Band-Aid. And we got to be cognizant of that. So how do we fix the long-term, term issue?
You know, Jody had a comment.
A couple of quick things, Eric, that you just brought up. So one of the things that we're going to look at too, is if you look at Venice High School and Building Four, there are some of those hallway spaces that are huge, right? And I know Dr. Bowden has brought that up a couple of times, that these, these huge spaces, and they don't ever use them effectively, because it's, it's just not created in the right way. So part of what.
But Jody, if you, if you have a space, and there are doors surrounding the space, and when you open up the door, you walk through the space to go to the other door, that's a hallway.
Sure.
And so if you're going to be teaching a class, and you're constantly having kids and teachers walking in and out of your classroom, that's disruptive.
No, absolutely.
Whether you call it a sectional, a couch, or a hallway.
We're not talking about an eight to 10-foot corridor, you're talking about a space that's 25 by 60.
A lot of our high schools have.
The size of two classrooms.
But, but they're right outside of a door.
They refer to it as pods and other things like that. And they moved away from it, because it wasn't instructionally sound. But one of the things I've challenged them with is, is there a way to reclaim that space? Is that there is a misuse, there's this gross square footage, that if you're going to call it a hallway, it's the world's largest hall.
I agree.
And so.
But, but if someone's going to leave.
If it's a hallway, it needs to be cut up, and you can put some classroom space in there. So that's the challenge is, how do you reclaim that space? Because you literally have thousands of square feet that if you put a desk out there, you have to go through one classroom to get to another. And so that's one of the challenges. But the bigger question is, you can add classroom, and it's not just a question at Venice High School, it's a question about school planning specifically, is, so you have a school, it's got 2,100 students. What's your upper limit on what you want at a school, at which point you say classroom wings aren't the answer, and new campus is the answer? So yes, you're exactly right. You could add 400 student stations to Venice High School, you can push the enrollment to 2,500. Are you comfortable with 2,500? Immediately, you have to start to ask the question, well, what do you do with the next 300 to 400? And so would you rather stay at 2,100, put them in portable spaces, and begin planning a campus at which you could put another 1,500? And so, but once you build a classroom wing, then you've committed to that being the capacity of the school. And so you're right, two or three 400 students, two or three 400 student classroom wings really ought to be a new campus. And so that's always the challenge that you run into.
And the issue is, they already have three lunches at Venice High. You know, if you start doing a fourth, they're going to start eating lunch at 8:00 AM. And, and going back to that, that hallway, you need to have some sort of barrier. Because if you go out of like Kara Mops's office, classroom, and you want to go to Barry's classroom, which is where the, the desks are, you're going to walk right by and be disruptive. There needs to be some sort of cubicle wall or something to block those people off. So people aren't, you know, if they got to go from Kara's office to, Kara's classroom to Barry's classroom, they're not walking through the middle of someone's, you know, classroom, or they're giving a lecture.
Well, and I would encourage you to visit the, the second floor at SPHS. It is exactly what is going on at Venice High School, but the space is utilized different, the furniture is different. And yes, students walk through while there's other classes going on. But part of the culture is, you're walking through someone else's classroom, how do you do it without being disruptive? And so that space, I don't know what happened when we built Venice High School, is that they put furniture in every classroom, and then they did not utilize that space the way it was designed. It was never designed to be a hallway, but it also was never designed to be a classroom.
Caroline.
That's, what I was going to talk about is, I think we should begin to look at building another school down there. I mean, there's only X amount of people you can put on the campus, because then you have to increase the core facility in order to serve them. So why don't, why don't we start looking at a new school?
So that is a.
I'm sure, go ahead.
That is a great idea. We have a meeting scheduled with Dr. Bowden and Jeff, I was about to call you, Eric. You're getting called all kinds of names today. Jeff and Jody and others of us on the planning team to meet with the, the development team and principals at West Villages to identify a high school site for West Villages. The Northport, the Northport kids that, most of the Northport kids who are going to Venice High School are in that area, and that's their district. The Venice High district goes all the way to River Road, and even though most of River Road is now in the city of Northport. So it's not that those kids are not choosing to go to Northport High, that's not their school. Northport High is mostly the unincorporated parts. And if, as you know, Northport, you know, unincorporated is growing on its own pace. And so they need those, the, the capacity that's at Northport really needs to stay for the areas of the unincorporated, or the vested, padded lots in Northport. The solution is to look at and work with the West Villages team. And we, as I said, we have a schedule, we have a meeting scheduled for November. The reason we waited for that is we want to do it after the 40-day count. We want to see how they, how much growth has happened this year in those areas? How many are producing kids? We, that'll give us a gauge of when do we need to really start thinking about this high school. But you're right, all of you, Eric, Jane, Caroline, Bridget, Shirley, you've all asked, when are we going to, and we are in that process. We, we recognize that there's going to need to be a reliever school for Venice High School. And we're working, the, West Villages owes us a piece of land, we'll have to do impact fees. Again, it's not a, they don't owe it to us, we have to pay for it. But, but they owe us it in terms of, we need to find it in their area, and.
Which was the intention, I mean, that was pre-planned into.
It was pre-planned. They, they've given, we already are purchased from them a K-8 site. We are going to need to purchase from them a high school site and likely another elementary school site for their build-out. And those, that elementary school site and the high school site is what we'll talk about. Where do we, where do we get them located? So it's on the map now. It's, they have, they had a 40-year build-out projection four years ago, it's now a 30-year build-out projection. So they, they are one of the top five fastest-growing developments in the country, not in the state, in the country. So, and they want to be the Lakewood Ranch South, they want to be family-oriented, they want to bring more kids.
The Ranch is number one, so speed of growth, just.
Yeah, exactly. I was going to say, we also have, we have two of the top five. We, we have two of the top five in the country that are coming to our schools, so.
Makes your job lots of.
It, it's making it fun right now.
Caroline.
So we're going to put portables on Venice High School?
Least, so it's not adding.
So that we're going to, and we're going to add another wing onto, onto Venice High School? Or are we going to look at a new school?
I think it's, I think it's both.
Both, actually. It's just the driving.
Both options.
You would certainly, when, the portables is a given, the students are there now, they have to be served. And so you do lease portable so that you keep the classroom wing option open. But if you add a 400-student station classroom wing at Venice, then that permanently moves the capacity of that school to about 2,500 students. Would you be rather keep the capacity at the 21, 2150 and build the other school earlier? That, that's the question. Certainly if you're going to build a classroom wing, that's a permanent solution and it delays the need for the high school, but it doesn't completely alleviate the need. And then when you build, now you have a high school at 2,500. Is, is that really what you want?
So can 2,500, a capacity of 2,500, will the core facilities provide service for that larger group, 2,500?
You're pushing the upper limits, but the answer is a tentative yes. Those students can be served at that. But Eric's point is, if you build the permanent capacity at 2,500 before you can open your high school down the road, then you got to get 3,000 kids on that campus. You, I mean.
Okay, the bottom line for me is that I don't want to see that many children on a campus. I, I just don't want to do it. I think it's bad and a lot of the parents that come to us, even their high school kids, they don't want their kids to come to our schools because the schools is too large and we're going to build them larger.
The very, the very basics of school construction is, before you can build a building, the kids have to exist.
I know.
Somewhere. The idea of planning and getting ahead is, you can build when you can say, we have the students now. So before you're going to be able to build a high school in the West Villages, you're going to have to dramatically overcrowd Venice High School and Northport High School and say, we have enough to build a thousand student stations at a new school? Well, that means that both Northport and Venice are going to have to be over capacity by that number.
This is what makes me nuts. Absolutely makes me nuts.
We don't speculate on school construction. We, there is no way if you build it, they will come.
I'm sorry, because anybody else, charter school, private school, anybody else can go in and build a school and we have such strict rules to follow, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Shirley.
So there, okay.
Well, lots of people want to talk. This is, should have added this in, I can, we can probably move.
You know, I share, I share those concerns with the, a large schools and, and, you know, if we're going to have, you know, taxing the core and having those long lunch periods then. But you said something earlier that if we use impact fees, is there any way, I mean, that, I guess to build a new school, we, I don't think we have that much in impact fees or do we?
So, right now, impact fees are yielding about four and a half, $5 million a year. Ballpark, you're going to spend $100 million on a new high school campus. Bridgette has a calculator. My math tells me it's 20 to 25 years if you never touched impact fees to be able to build a new campus, but the law says you can't let impact fees build up for that long, that if you don't spend them, they have to.
Seven years?
Yeah, right.
Five or seven?
Yes. I'm getting a high five from my CFO. So the math, the math fundamentally does not work. There are other mechanisms. If you want to talk about how do you build a campus without state approval, someone else can build the campus and lease it back to you and then.
P3.
Yes.
So very.
And then at the end of it, they give you the building. So it's a, it's a finance lease back mechanism that districts are using because, quite honestly, you can't do business in a normal way, so you have to get creative.
P3, very cool.
The other thing that you can do, and we talked, we've talked about this at Lakewood Ranch, is you can build a, you can build your core to where your ultimate, so you decide that you want West Villages High School, for lack of a better name, to be 1,500 or 2,000 student stations. You build your core to that and you, but you only build enough student stations for what you have in medium.
At the current time.
At the current time. The challenge with that is, the state has also given us a cost per student station, a cost per student station allotment, and so the, the more, the bigger the core is, the more, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure we could do that anymore because we would have, there'd be too much cost if you put in fields and everything else and to carry all those student stations allocated to that site. It'd be tough to do that, make that work.
Well, why don't we build a charter school there? Can't we have a charter school, the West Villages Charter School and buy it back?
We can, yes, we can.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I've, I've been on record multiple times about how I feel about lend, loan, borrowing money, but I would not be adverse to borrowing money to create a 50-year asset. I wouldn't be remiss. So is it possible to take five years with, Caroline's actually smiling.
Yes, because I proposed this and you said no.
Okay, let Eric go.
I wasn't, we weren't talking about building a high school at the time, a 50-year, 50-year asset. So could we take five years with the impact fees, call, make it a down payment on their, on it like you're buying a, I'm using analogy of buying a house. Can you, can you get five years, that's 20 million, and then go out and borrow the rest without state permission?
Yes, you can do anything with a willing partner. So it requires a third party. And so you could use impact fee dollars to buy the site and you own the land and then.
No, I'm talking about us doing it. We go out and borrow.
Cops.
Right.
Talking about cops.
Cops. So.
We're talking about a sale-leaseback, not a cops.
No, I wasn't talking about a sale-leaseback. I was talking about, like, when I buy my house. I, I paid cash, but I mean, other people.
Hello, Mitzi.
You can structure that in a variety of.
Welcome to the table.
But I mean, is there a way, using a combination of borrowing and impact fees, that we could do without building the?
In a word, yes.
All right, that's what I wanted to know.
Hi, Mitzi.
Chief Financial Officer.
Assistant Superintendent.
True.
You absolutely.
CPA.
You get like 10 letters after. You know, you absolutely could borrow the funds, you could pay part of it, you can use multiple funding sources with which to accomplish that, that build. The issue is being approved for a build.
Capacity.
No, that's what I was asking, if we, if we used impact fees and borrowing, would we still have to go to Tallahassee? That was my question.
Because the borrowing is, the backing for the borrowing or the lease payments is your millage and that is the one, that is the most restrictive, which requires approval from Tallahassee.
So if we did, if we went to P3 and, and we had used our millage as backing, we couldn't? I mean.
Oh, I don't know.
That's what I'm trying to, she's shaking her head no.
I don't.
There are some mechanisms.
But I think, but I think.
My, my point is, I'm willing to get creative in order to, to fix this issue, because this is an issue, we see the problem coming.
Right.
And I don't want to be sitting here five years from now, everybody's like throwing their hands up. We know what's going to happen five years from now.
And Shirley's point should not be lost, is you do open up flexibility that if you wanted to build West Villages High School or K-8 or K-12, it could be a district-run charter school, in which you are both the chartering agency and the governing board of the school. You could run it like any other school in the district, but if it's chartered, then you circumvent a lot of this.
I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to think creative. I'm shocked that Ms. Brown has mentioned us to be a charter school, I'm shocked by that, but the mere fact that she's willing to entertain that makes me think it's probably a good idea.
I'm always up for entertainment.
So, so I mean, all I'm saying is, we have a problem. We, we can see what's going to happen in the future, we can make decisions now to solve that problem in the future. I want to make decisions now to solve those problems in the future. I don't want to be here in the future saying, oh my God, how did we get here?
So here's the, the big picture. This big picture is, what do you think the capacity, where do you want to end up at Venice High School? If you say 2,100, but it's going to get overcrowded, but we want to bring it back to 2,100, then we're going to come up with a portable solution, not a classroom wing, and then your charge to us is, then get to work on building something between Venice and Northport and be as creative as you have to do to make it happen.
Yes.
But once you build that classroom wing, you're coming back down to that 2,500 capacity. So that's the decision in front of you is, do we just start putting portables at Venice High School until we can build a campus and we bring it back to 2,100? Or do you add a classroom wing and say, that's its new capacity? And.
Right now, the capacity is 1,900.
If you tell, if you tell staff to go get creative, we'll go figure out how to.
I agree with Ms. Brown.
Okay, so a couple, really quick, and I want to be cognizant of time because we have a couple other elements and I, we can move some around because this is time-sensitive, given that this is on our agenda today. But I want to make sure, a couple different clarification points, but I think Todd did a good, did us a good, a solid by saying, okay, this is where we have to start. Okay, what's the capacity, what we're comfortable with Venice before we move forward. But from a clarification standpoint, as we forecast for this growth, is, that's something we can make a decision in a future workshop. There's a lot of things to flesh out there. And then when we evaluate capacity, because that does play a role, regardless, not just Venice, it's all of our high school capacity that plays a role in whether we get that approval. And then we can talk about the creative opportunities or various vehicles to finance if we were to build a new high school. Is that a fair overview? So for right now, from, to move forward based on, and we can obviously ask more questions at the board meeting, but since we have everyone here and it's a pretty complicated, let's take advantage of it. I just want to make sure, from the CIP, is there any additional questions or concerns from amending it, from a, from the, from what would be presented to us this evening for approval?
Yeah, I, I agree. Let's, and perhaps at the next workshop, you know, let's, let's, let's dig into this further. I didn't, I mean, we knew it was a can of worms that we needed to open.
Absolutely.
But, you know, and I think if we can find creative ways to get around the state restrictions on building another school, because that probably is the best answer, is to go ahead and build a school near the West Villages for the high school. Because, you know, do we want a mega high school? And I don't think we do. Although, you know, there's a lot of reasons why a lot of people would want to go to Venice High right now, but I think we need to look at building another school down there.
Especially if they play football.
Eric.
But I, I just wanted, or volleyball, or baseball. But what I'm trying to understand is, I understand that there's a decision, if we, we build the ring, that could put off, that could impact the flexibility of building a high school. And I, I got that decision-making point, but the question is, is, we have a CIP plan that has, are we going to try and push the, the wing forward a year and then maybe change our minds later? Or are we going to leave it where it's at and then possibly in a future workshop, move it forward?
You've accurately described the dilemma in front of you.
But I, I have to take a vote this afternoon.
My recommendation to you would be, for what it's worth, is to charge staff with, what does it look like if you move the wing one year to the left from a planning perspective that doesn't obligate you to build the wing? It basically says, if we're going to build a wing, we need to do it sooner than later. But let's talk about options to not have to build the wing to begin with. So you kind of go down dual tracks of saying, if you're going to build a wing at Venice, then let's look at building it in 2021, not 2122. But at the same time, give us some options that might be better than building that wing altogether.
So you're saying that we should change the CIP plan to move it that one year, even though if we don't do it tonight, this afternoon?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I needed, okay, Caroline.
What is Riverview's capacity right now? What is Riverview at? Because I've been hearing about Riverview too.
Page 13.
I wasn't prepared for this quiz, but I can get you. I don't even have that.
Right, page 13 is our current capacity, right?
Yeah, it's last, well, last year's numbers, but yeah.
Riverview.
It's the first, it's the first.
Page 13.
Fish, 2786.
Yeah, it's your first column.
I love those.
Yeah, 2786.
So 2786 is fish capacity, but, but level, so the level of service standard for high schools from the state is actually 90, 90% of that, so it's slightly, it would be 10% less than the 26.
Okay.
2647.
Okay, so, because there's comments about how big Riverview High School is. So if we're going to start talking about doing this, we have to talk about our high schools as a whole.
Absolutely.
Not cherry pick, one high school over another.
Well, and that also shows, you know, Northport had almost 3,000 students, which is probably more than we want a high school also, so.
So that's the question, if you're going to build a. Yeah, if you're going to build a high school somewhere 15 to 2,000 students, unfortunately, you have to have 15 to 2,000 students over capacity across your high schools. And as much as we'd like for the state just to look at Northport and Venice High School, they will look at Sarasota, at Riverview.
Riverview's over.
Riverview's not over.
No, Riverview's not over, so that's what I was saying.
We need to change the capacity at Riverview because it's too big of a high school.
You can't change.
You've already built it.
It's already built.
Yeah, just don't want to build one like it again.
I'm trying to think creatively.
No, no, and that's why, again, wait, wait, okay, stop, 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 stop. So for the sake of time, for the sake of time, that's what I said earlier, I think we'll do a workshop on that because we can't just isolate Venice only, we have to look at all, we have to look at all of our capacity as it pertains to high schools and we can't change the capacity because it's already been authorized when we built it. So we have, it's, that's, that is as it is. Then based on that, we can go into the creative ways to, whether we wait and do portables or we find creative ways to circumvent the capacity issues and build a school.
But that is a great analogy. If you think Riverview High School is too big in its current format, that's where Venice is headed if you put a classroom wing.
That's why I don't want to do it, because that's why we're losing kids.
Right. And so if you say having 24, 2500 square, 24, 2500 students on a campus is too much, and educationally, I would agree with you, that's where you're headed if you put a classroom wing at Venice High, is another 24, 2500 student school.
I'd rather bring, I'd rather build.
Oh yeah, sorry, but Jane.
I'd rather build a new high school. And I was for going out for cops way before this, because I could see what was happening by utilizing all of our funds that we needed for safety and security. I knew we were going to be behind.
Jane.
I know that we really have to look at what we want to design in terms of capacity because it's expensive to put high school programs in. Why do most of our charter schools are K-8? It's because it's very, very expensive, right?
Right.
To, to put a high school together. And, and I really think that, that we, we need to decide what, what ultimately we're looking at in our, our typical high school. Because, you know, I have, I have a grandchild at Riverview and it is a large school. It's a very large campus. So I think we have to really look at that and, and design some characteristics. Why is everybody looking at, and why are several superintendents looking again at making schools a charter district? Because of some of the same kinds of things we talked about, about making or having a charter school. So it's difficult because we do have to, to live with so many restrictions on building and capacity that others do not have to do.
And the other thing, I don't think we've gotten a good, I don't think we've gotten this message out, is the fact that we can no longer build the schools the way we were, which were maintenance, almost maintenance-free.
We're talking about.
We no longer can do that, which is going to cost us much more on maintenance fees. We have not gotten that message out.
Okay, I'm going to get us back on track as much as I can. So page 32 is our current CIP, which would potentially be amended based on this discussion and we need to figure that out or think about it, but to be fair to you, before we take some action this afternoon, and I know it's due technically August 1st to the state, is that true, the CIP? I know, I mean, they could probably have stacks of paper waiting and I know we are waiting because of School Avenue. So you got your direction from School Avenue and that's on here?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, is that under new projects?
It's under, it's SHS, School Avenue Project.
Sorry, thank you. And then we have, the only difference, from a direction standpoint or what the board should think about, is the Venice High Classroom Wing, which I'm looking for, where?
It's, it's under previously approved projects.
It's a nine and a five.
It's a five and five, under 21, 21, 22.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, but that is, that's 2021, 22, so that is flexible, just to remind board members, really it's only this current year that's really the, okay. I mean, ideally, we want to have it accurate.
But what I understand is that you want us to proceed with our meeting with Sheena and see if there is a way we could bring back to you one year.
So would there be any amendment to this as is, based on the discussion?
Yeah, if, if we can find a way to bring that, that we would bring a revised sheet to the meeting tonight and show you that we were able to make that revision.
Okay, is that, can you, okay, that's, sorry, that's a quick timeline, so.
No, Dr. Bowden already gave us to, gave it to us yesterday, so we were prepared.
Okay, so for the sake of this discussion, is that, I just want to, and I.
As my budget accountant, though, do I need to walk her off of a cliff? I just.
No, she knows.
I had enrollment stuff to work with yesterday.
She knows, she told me, come, come, come get me as soon as you're, you're done, so.
Okay.
We were all, we were all aware that we were going to be doing this on the fly.
Got it. As we, we have done that a lot this past year or so, so, okay. So that, I just want to, and then clearly there's a lot of opportunity to talk about the high schools in general and we can do that at a, at a future workshop soon, is that a fair?
And you just got permission from your board to get real creative about how do you build a high school somewhere between Venice and Northport?
I think that, yeah, I agree.
I heard one person talk about borrowing money, who never talks about borrowing money.
Like P3.
I also heard one person talk about charter schools, who never talks about charter schools, so.
Hell has frozen over today.
So you have permission to do whatever it takes, I mean, yes.
What I hear is that you want West Villages High School.
Yes.
I'd like an analysis, so we can take, I mean, I'm not going to, but no, I think that we have a lot, there's a lot of stuff that was very relevant, I'm glad it was discussed that we need to kind of flesh out, but.
The mascots, the Atlanta Braves.
And with that, unless there's any additional items that you guys need.
It's not, it's not, it's not that we want, it's that we need.
I think you got a snapshot into the crazy life of school planning that she gets to deal with all the time.
All right, I'd just like to mention, so we've talked about portables on the Venice High campus several times. Let me remind you, those of you who know Venice High campus, there is not a lot of room for portable. So we're, we met with Eric and his team a few days ago in trying to brainstorm some solutions. There is not going to be a good solution there. And so, you know, there is a football practice space that, on that campus, that is probably going to be a piece of the solution for portable. So just so you know, we are, that's not an easy thing to just say, we're putting portables out there.
Can't we have them practice football up in that empty wing?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. What about, you know, they, the football field's all the way at the end, but as they go by the football field, there's a, there's a field on the right between them and the football stadium.
We are looking at every option on campus, absolutely, that's a viable solution for portable placement. I'm just saying that as we start to look at portable at Venice High School, there are not a lot of good answers.
All right, Jody, tell me, because when I walked that.
Mr. Peacock, John Peacock's going to be calling us.
But, but listen, I want Jody to go on record, because when you walk the campus of Venice High School, it looks like there's more land, but there's this dry retention that's really, and I say, why can't you put it there? Why can't you put it there? Can you just talk the 30 seconds of why it looks like grass that you can build on, but it's really not?
Yeah, so part of the area in the back of the Venice High campus, between Venice High and the waterway back there, which looks like its usable space, is dry retention. So by swift mud standards, we've got to have so much dry retention on that campus. As we put more impermeable space, like portables, and the infrastructure that goes along with all that, we cannot get into those spaces. So that's why it tightens that campus up literally very quickly. So we, there are some options, and we're going to look at all of them, but with everything else, there are guidelines for where you put portables. We've got to be so many, so many square foot, so many linear foot away from a bathroom. We can't be too close to buildings. So the Venice High campus becomes constrained very quickly when you start to look at how you put groups of portables on that campus. So we're going to look at every solution, and we're going to price every solution, and we'll have those conversations. But they're not, they're not going to be easy solutions to say, we've got a nice, clean space and here's where it goes. There's going to be an impact, is what I'm saying.
Fair enough, thank you for the heads up. No, no. All right.
Maybe we could have somebody come in and build out that extra wing, you know, temporarily, and we could lease that wing.
He's saying where?
In that, in that empty wing that we've got, that we made the space for. Let somebody lease it.
I'm going to be fair to their, we just tasked them with a very short timeline before our board meeting, so unless they're, I'm actually not going to say, write down any additional questions for future meetings or for our board meeting. But thank you very much. I think we, we got where we needed to on that one, so. And Shirley, kudos to bringing up the CIP because that was necessary. Next up is Charter School Capital, so Mitzi and Natalie. Good morning.
Moral support.
What is your view on Venice High?
But may I clarify one thing about the reassignment process? No, because it's, you know, the, the one gal gave the misinformation about we meet once a month. We meet once a month for appeals. So during this hot and heavy season, we're meeting biweekly, but they're three-hour meetings by level. So I could spread it out, meet once a week and have them shorter. And they're case by case, they're the hardship letters. We have, do you have space? Do they have an IP? What about staffing? And so I sit with the execs and with Katrina, so it's, it's a very extensive process.
Is biweekly, twice a week or once every two?
I can meet every other day if you want.
She spends hours, hours and hours and hours.
I'm confused when people say biweekly.
Chris and Steve can verify the amount of time, and it's very label-intensive. And we had, we processed over 1,300 over the summer. Okay, so we're working as quickly as we can. And you know, these are not nice, the happy calls are great, I do the happy calls. Hey, congratulations. And Katrina does the not-so-happy calls.
No, it's not. No. So.
Rank has it, is that how it works?
Yes, go for it. Charter School Capital.
All right, so at our last board meeting, we had a conversation about allocation of capital dollars to charter schools. As much as I loved my spreadsheet, I heard individually from all of you that maybe sometimes less can be more. And so I did try to pack a lot of information into one spreadsheet just to get it all there. And so I won't name the board member, but if she wants to volunteer, she can.
She, it's not me.
But basically.
I was like, I don't know, we could be all of us.
Not me.
What I, what I decided to do was to put my teacher hat back on and to say, all right, is there a way that you can teach the same lesson differently? And so we've gone from a very, very complicated spreadsheet to what I consider to be the utmost in simplicity. And so the graph that you're looking at, looks at the average per student capital allocation over the last five years. In the third year, 2016-17, which is the last year before the state involved themselves in the allocation of capital dollars to students, we introduced the roll year, the rolling three-year average. And so on your current budget allocation, you see that in 1415, it was 771 per student, and 1516, it was 691 per student, and in 1617, it was 778. I think that 778 number is a good number to benchmark off of. In 1718, you see that the allocation increased dramatically to 1321, and that, and this year, it is now at 525, although the state statute shows it around 566 under interest of full disclosure. And so if you're looking at that, the only difference between the current budget allocation and proposal 2 is the allocation in 1819 and a corresponding offset in the rolling three-year average. And so the philosophical, if you just get down to what is the decision before you, is do you want the rolling three-year average to be back to that 778 figure or in close proximity? Or do you want this year's allocation, the money that we're giving them this year, to be back to that 1617 threshold? So if 778 is your benchmark, it is what capital schools receive prior to state involvement, I think this graph shows the great volatility in the last three years in their funding, is are you going to, in 1819, are you comfortable that 832 as a rolling average is above 778? There's certainly an argument to say, over the three years, you're right back where you started at. Or do you want to do an allocation in the current year that says, we're going to return your annual funding back to 1617? And quite honestly, if you charged me with making a argument in favor of either one of those positions, I could come up with a very logical argument in favor of using either the annual allocation or the rolling three-year average and benchmarking it somewhere around that 778, 775 figure.
Okay, Caroline.
How much per student would that be?
Currently, if you said, I want to raise this year's allocation back up to the 775, is that what you're saying? Is that the question? It would be $200, $250 in that range per student.
Wait, can you clarify that? You said that, how much per student would that be?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, the difference, I got, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so.
You were just saying the difference.
Yes.
Got it.
I could live with 200 per student.
The difference. Okay.
To raise it by 200 per student.
Okay.
Shirley.
Yeah, I was looking at this too, just, if, if, you did have these numbers on the bottom for most of them. I had to calculate some of them, though, on the list that you gave us. But I think if we did a straight dollar amount across the board.
Yep.
Per student, this is what you get. I was looking at the 250 or the 200. The 200 would bring us up to, what, about 725? And I imagine it's going to cost about $1.3 million. The 250 would bring them up to 775, which would, I think, bring them up to what they were in 2016, 17. And that would cost $1.6 million. And I think that, you know, you know, to justify this, they too had to have to make these security improvements. And to hit them with the no increase in, in the base student allocation and to reduce their capital at a time when, you know, the state is asking them to do more, and, and we are too. I mean, we want these kids to be safe in these charter schools too. I mean, they're our students. And I, and I think to, to just rip those dollars away from them, look at me, so descriptive. We're not ripping them away. To, to reduce their funding by that, I just don't think it's reasonable to expect them to be able to absorb both of those hits along with asking them to do more. We always ask everybody to do more with less, but that was draconian. So, I mean, I'd like to propose the 250 for the $1.6 million, because we have seen that our, the $25 million we set aside for safety and security, we've over, we're coming in under that, so we've got that money there, do we not? $1.6 million?
That is correct.
So I'd like to propose the $250 per student, bringing them up to the 775. They would be at the 2016 level, close to what they were in 2014. I would imagine they went down on 2016 because the state gave less money and they was.
Correct. I mean, it, it has to do with their enrollment versus Pico.
Yeah, right. I mean, I would like to keep them kind of on a line of where, where they would expect. But in addition to that, and getting prepared for going forward, I would also like to find out, because there was some language in the legislation that dropped out on 7069, but I thought it was good language. I would like to know from our charter schools, if we're going to be giving them money in the future, who owns, who owns the building? And to make sure that there isn't any of that personal gain from it, and, and how much the building is worth and what their lease payment is, to make sure that they are following those standards that were in 7069, to make sure that they are paying reasonable rents or lease payments, that they aren't paying something like 15, 20, 25% over what the going lease is. So that we have that information to go forward if we're going to be doing this again next year, which we'll be finding out before long. But I think it's information that we should ask the charter schools to give us. I mean, they gave us some information the last time we asked, but it was kind of all over the place on how they put that together. But I think it's reasonable for us to ask those questions. But this, right now, I would like to say 250, give it to them, they, the school started already. School has started, their budgets are in trouble. We need to help.
Comments, questions?
Well, I really was against, you know, the vote that we had at the last board meeting, so if we bring this back, I would really, you know, like to see us help the charter schools, because I know that they are having quite a difficult time now. And we're all in this thing together, and we need to make sure that all of our students are safe. And a lot of it has to do with safety and security. And so I would, I would really like for us to bring this back for another vote. And I would agree that, that we need to do something around one of these proposals that would give them that, you said 1 point, what did you say, 1.6?
As.
Really, two different proposals being discussed. Neither of them are contained on your spreadsheet. They really err on the side of simplicity of saying, just take their counts from this year and multiply it by 200 or $250 and be done with it. So do you have a preference on the, we've heard 200, we've heard 250. 250 is the 1.6, and the 200 is, I think it's 1280.
I'm glad I brought my calculator.
Can I just make a point of your patient? So the 525 number that you have in front of you was based off of their enrollment. And traditionally, our charters overestimate their enrollments. I don't know if you've been looking at the five-day enrollment account, but they estimated 6,900, which is what the number is showing you in the average, and their enrollment's about 6,400. I'm not anticipating that when October comes around, there'll be 500 more kids in our charter schools. So again, that took your average down. When we calculated the amount, it was literally taking the total appropriation, dividing it by the number of charter FTEs to come to that 566 amount. This 525 is because it was divided by estimated enrollment for 1819, which is a completely different number, so it kind of deflated that total. So just, just so you're aware, if it's 250, it becomes 816. If it's 200, it's 776, or whatever, the 781 or something like that. So, or 766.
And that's a good point of clarification. It's not, and I know the charter schools send in, they're readjusted, it's not that they're trying, because I think you want to be cautious that it's not that they're trying to.
No, no, no.
But it's for us to look at from a calculation standpoint.
It's a maximum that they're allowed to have at their school, so that's what they always provide to us.
Eric.
So we, we just heard that, that we needed $3 million for School Avenue. So we're taking care of that, because we, like Ms. Sucker said, it's a priority. Where's the 1.6 million coming from?
That's coming from the $25 million allocated for safety and security that's coming in at 21. That's not worth, the 3 didn't come out of the.
So where did the 3 come from?
I'll have to.
But I thought you just said we wedged it in, we just added it in.
We had to take it from somewhere.
You had to take it from somewhere.
So it's included in the budget, so it did not come out of any source, I mean, we.
I mean, it was, it was a new thing, I just heard about it today.
Correct, and it adjusts column totals and does all of that. We didn't subtract from anywhere to put the 3 in, it came out of the.
Reserves?
Well, I guess it's less that made its way to the reserves, yes.
Okay. The other thing is, do our, do our district schools, district main schools, district schools, do they normally go up to 250 per student in capital dollars?
We don't allocate our capital dollars by student, we allocate it by project priority.
But I do, I'm just going to reiterate what I had said at the last meeting. The charter schools average three-year from before the legislature got involved to now, still goes up like 100 bucks.
Yes.
Slightly over 100 dollars. So it's not like they're at the same place, they're 100 dollars more. I just wanted to make sure that that's where it's at, even though I'm being the minority, which I'm fine with. But I just wanted to reinforce that issue, but everybody can vote the way they want to vote.
Well, can I, can I make a couple comments for first? Did you talk yet? Can I? Okay, go ahead.
That's part of my, other part of our conversation I would think we should have.
Yep.
How do we handle this in the future?
Absolutely.
If their Pico dollars are way up there and ours are down here, how do we handle it? If it is unequal, because I agreed with you last time. So I want to, in this way, we need to tell people upfront what it is that we're going to do if they have more Pico dollars, if they get it in close like that.